Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Peter Falvo on behalf of the JLCC Seaview. Just my little way of background. I represent the contract purchasers of the site that is generally referred to as the Seaview Towers. And at the present time, the Seaview Towers has an approval that was obtained by the current owners for 100 to 110 condominium units in one building. They just recently received an extension from the planning board to continue that approval. However, they no longer want to develop the job and have offered it for sale. And my clients have entered into a contract purchase. Within the framework of the existing approval, as far as setbacks and lot coverage and all that, we're working within that same or those same parameters. So we're not really altering the site per se. But we're changing or hope to change the design of the building to make it more attractive, more functional. And in the process, as will be explained, we're also going to provide an easement to the city so that they can change the parking configuration on Ocean Avenue and South Bath Avenue to pick up more on-street parking. Mr. Montefiore is our architect, also a son of Long Branch. And with his permission, I'll have him describe what we're proposing and then I'll go on further and describe what we're asking this council to do in order to must effectuate this development. Jim?
Good evening, everybody. So this is our concept drawing where we are today. We are preliminarily working through the plans. Our current design is to do a crescent-shaped building where all the units are phasing outward towards the ocean as they come around in a curve. The building itself will have 140 units. It has the same exact lot coverage number. It will be 12 stories above parking. So this is our parking level here. And then there's another level below grade because we're increasing the number of parking spaces on the property so we can satisfy the 140, the extra units, plus our amenities and plus our public, our commercial spot. So also along here, you can see how we've created this parking, which was originally on the original approval. That's 59 cars that would be added to the street. We're burming up here and we're adding these public areas of like shade structures, little plazas, some flags coming down here. And just making this more of a public entity along the street because our building is raised up about 10 feet higher than the street itself. We have a pool on the end with an infinity edge that comes over. And then this is our amenity deck with our health club that is part of our open membership, our health club that was approved in the original approval. The building steps up this way off the ocean and it gets up to nine stories in the middle. And then there's a clubhouse also on the roof here. And then the penthouses step up above that. So this is our zoning comparison from where we were before to where we are now. The red dotted line was the original footprint of the parking garage that was there and the platform that was there. The blue dotted in area is the footprint of the building that was there. Our building is, the green is our first floor, and then the purple is our crescent shape. And then this piece goes up towards east-west away from the ocean. The building has to be longer in this direction than in this direction. So that's why this stem comes out and steps up.
And that's for the purpose of satisfying the cap requirement?
This is a cap requirement, yes. So also our building, as you go through your packet, you'll see that our building is 12, it's 10, at 12, 11, 10, and then it stops at 9. So it kind of, it's going around and down at the same time towards the middle of the site. We have, let's see, the original approval had 249 cars that paid valet. And they had 191 cars just basically parked. Our building, we're proposing two levels of parking and we're going to have 409 cars currently, which well satisfies all the parking on this site. Not to mention the effect pad has added 60 spaces around the perimeter. So this is a, just a quick elevation of the front of the building. It faces Ocean Boulevard. It curves in this way. And then there's a big drop-off area here that you drive up. And then it's all burned in the front. And you can see the building comes down and around as it goes through this curve. And they have windows spattered through this corridor that comes around. This is the side from South Bath Avenue. So you can see, this is our caper line that we have to maintain for height and air, shadows. So here's our parking levels. So we have a level that's below grade that starts at elevation 18. And then we have a level above that that starts at 28. And then our plaza is at 3 and 4. So you will drive up off the street onto this courtyard. And then there's a drop-off in our lobby starts here and it goes up a story. There's steps on both sides. And then this would allow you to come in and have accessibility from there. There's also two other elevators, so it's serviced with three elevators. This is our plaza level. This shows our, this is our health spa. This is a game room. This is the building amenities here. There's also units that stretch around this first front over here on this side. This is our large plaza area. And these are the courtyards along the street. And then again, this looks down at the, at the drop-off area that drives into the park. And then as the building goes up, these are my caper lines of height. So the building steps up this way. It comes up to the, to the ninth floor, I believe it steps up to the, up to the ninth floor. We have another clubhouse with a big plaza in front of that. And then these units start stepping away. And then this is our roof and then the 11 and 10 floors. So we have, the original approval on the public, the non-residential was 49,000. And I believe we're at the same number plus, plus the outside public areas that we've created around the building to satisfy the non-residential requirements. That's pretty much all of it. The building's around 290,000.
What's the height of the building that's currently approved?
12 stories over parking.
So in what, what are you promoting?
12 stories above parking.
Okay, so it's the same, it's not higher?
No, it's taller because I'm, it's 130 feet. I believe theirs was 120. And I only did that because we need more height to create a nice first floor height. And then all the, I've been running into this with all these buildings up there on the shores, like if you try and do 10 foot per floor, it just doesn't work. So we're trying to do 10 feet per floor, floor-to-floor height. And that gives us more room to get nice ceilings and, you know, really provide a good amenity for the people that live there. And by the way, the height that increases also increases my setback. So my tower is in further than the original towers from the corners, a couple of 65 feet instead of 60.
Approximately, how many people will we live in this facility?
How many people will we live in there? It depends on how many people are in their families. There's 140 units.
Okay, but how many bedrooms there?
There are all two bedrooms, there's some threes.
There's some two and threes. So we could potentially have children that will be ten in our spouses.
I'm not so sure this is kid-friendly development, but there would probably be a small amount of children, I would imagine.
How big are the units?
But I think this is, how big are the units? The units are 1,500 starting and they go on to about 2,000.
And is that, that's smaller than the units that were for that?
They had no units. I, I have their plan and it was really never defined. It was just a plate. There's no units defined.
The original, the original approval did not have a defined floor plan. And the concept at that time, as I understand in speaking with the developer, was they wanted a prospective purchaser to come in and say, "How big of a unit do you want? You want 4,000 square feet? We can give you a 4,000 square foot unit. You want 1,000 square feet? We can give you a 1,000 square foot unit." So there was never a defined plan, which was something that we didn't feel comfortable with. We thought that if we provided a range of sizes, that that would be more in keeping with what the market would deal with or the market would accept and would still provide as much as possible to the prospective purchaser. Having said that, if someone comes in and says, "I want to combine three units," or "I want to combine two units," you know, if they're willing to pay for it, we're willing to accommodate them within reason. We just don't want to get too, too crazy with the configurations. As you can see, we're still working on the design of the units, the layouts and things of that nature. And it's the age-old story. You have the developer and then you have the marketer and you have the PR guy and you have the broker. And the more people you put around the table, the more opinions you come up with as to how it should look. This is where we're starting. We're trying to provide everybody with an ocean view. And we're trying to do it in a fashion that we don't impact at all on Ocean Avenue, the Broadwalk or the beach from the point of view of a shadow or a shade area. So that's where we kept within the appropriate setbacks. The difference between this unit and, or this proposal and what has been approved is that the existing approval calls for 100 units. And it also calls for a lot of the cars to be valeted. And quite honestly, when we looked at it, I said, "The only person that's going to make money on this deal is the valet." Because they were stocking the valet car 6D. And they basically said, "Everybody's going to be duking the valet to make sure it was one or two and not number six." So that's one of the reasons we expanded the parking concept and also to provide enough parking on the site. The reason we're before you, respectfully, is because your ordinance presently provides for maximum density on the site of 110 units, even though the actual approval was for 110 units, 100 units. This ordinance, your ordinance as it is right now, also permits us to have 100 units of condos, plus we can build a 100-unit hotel. In discussions with the mayor, Mr. Renone, Mr. Jackson, everybody felt that a hotel plus 100 units would be a lot of intensity of use on one piece of property. It was then our feeling that if we could increase the density on the site so that we could come up with 140 units, that we would not need the hotel. The other item that was pushed in our discussions was that we wanted to make sure we had more than enough parking and we've increased the parking capacity over what has been originally approved. We're still going to have a valet, but when the valet takes your cars, you've got to put it in a spot so that you should be able to, you know, if you want to use the valet, you'll be able to put it on a spot so that when you come down, you don't have to wait for the valet to move a half a dozen cars before they get to your car.
Also, can I ask you something? This 1,500 average square foot of each unit conforms with what's going on in the area. It's about the, the right size, the same size as the other developments, and it should conform very well in the neighborhood.
Mr. Falvo, you know, there were, there were two concerns, obviously, that we'll discuss with Mr. Jackson and Mr. Renone. I just wanted to put that out there. Number one, that the administration, the council is not interested in granting an abatement for this project. And I just wanted to be clear that. And the other thing, as I mentioned, is we talked about, those two buildings there have been in ISOR for two decades, I guess. And you know, you get a lot of complaints about that. So a priority for us, I think, would be to get those taken down as soon as possible.
We've spoken, we've spoken with several demolition companies. And we're in serious negotiations with them. The timeline that has been given to us by virtually every contractor that we've spoken to is that the physical demolition of a building will prob, depending on weather, will probably take four and a half to five months. They're giving that as a conservative time period so that we don't tell you we're going to get it down in three months and then come back and say we know the two-month extension. That's the number they've given us. They've also indicated, however, that the building has some environmental problems. There's asbestos tile all over the place. And additionally, there is a lot of the plumbing is wrapped or has asbestos casing around it. All that asbestos, and there's also a considerable amount of lead paint, wood, door jams, doors, et cetera. All of those contaminants have to be removed before you can start the actual demolition. So we're sort of working on the concept that we would enter into a contract with the demolition company. The idea, right now, we're scheduled to close on or about November 4th. If they would get in there, for lack of a better word, on November 5th and start doing their environmental remediation. To the extent that they have to get in there before that to do an environmental assessment, we've worked with the present owner that they'll allow our professionals in the building to do that assessment. We're anticipating, not us, the demolition company is anticipating that it's going to take them at least two months to rid the building of the asbestos tiles wrapping and whatever else. And that, that's an optimistic approach because depending on the condition of the asbestos, if it's friable, it's got to be encapsulated before it's removed from the building. And these are requirements of the DEP. These aren't, this isn't something we're looking to unnecessarily incur the expense. Once they do that, they can, they can start demolishing the building. If we have reasonable weather, we're anticipating the buildings will be down by the end of May. You may still have some rumble on the site, which will be removed, but the towers will be down.
I'm concerned, though, about the summer, you know, traffic and having that kind of thing going on on the beach. So can you guarantee that it'll be done before our summer season starts?
Well, your summer, your summer season starts on Memorial Day, right? Which is the end of May.
Yeah.
We're hoping to have it down by then. If we've got, if we have good weather on Memorial Day, there, the timeline they've given us is four and a half to five months. And a gentleman who gave it to us, saying, "I'm being conservative." You know, whether it's good, conditions are good, it'll be down ahead of time. Whether or not the site will be totally clear by that time, I don't know. We don't anticipate having any impact on Ocean Avenue or South Bath Avenue. The trucks are becoming in and out, the same way they do on the other construction sites.
Why is this, why are we, there's seven months upfront, so why is this all not starting until November?
First of all, we have to get the ordinance changed.
Okay, so?
That's number one.
So that's April, so?
So that's April. The sellers, for whatever reason, we don't know, have said November 4th is when we want to close.
Is there a possibility of moving that up, given that councilwoman's concern and giving, because you're now essentially talking about those buildings not coming down at the earliest until May of next year, so that's 14 months from now? Is there? You know, my understanding was that there was some urgency to get this ordinance done because of the contract. So we're going to rush to get the ordinance done and then wait seven months before we close it?
No, we, we have, before I can build this building, as you're aware, Mr. Renone, I have to go back near the cap approval amendment. I also have to get amended site plan approval from the planning board.
Sounds like a new site plan.
Should be.
It sounds like a completely new. Well, you're saying it's amended, this is a completely, I mean, I'm going to guess, our engineer's in the back of the room, but I'm going to guess this is a completely new building, new site plan, and we're everything right.
Well, it is, but we're, we're within the same footprint. We're not expanding, we're not going out as far as setbacks are concerned or anything else. So we're figuring, you know, come hell or high water, we have to close November 4th. Either that or we lose a lot of money.
Is it, is it that the sellers don't want to close until November? Or is it that you don't want to close until you get all of your approval?
It's a combination of both.
We need the time, okay, Tom? We need the time to do the pre-construction, do the final design, the footprints, the final plans, to do the bidding. This is normal development time on a project of this size.
Yeah, I don't understand. That's, that's all the-
We're just worried about the demolition happening in a-
Correct.
-on a summer beach, so it's, you know, it's saying by the end of May, but if it delays it a month, we're hidden by the beach area.
Yeah, you're, you're doing your building plan. I'm guessing that all of your building plans start with the building being taken down. So you preparing your building plans doesn't need to delay taking the building down because you've got to take the building down no matter what, right? So the question is, is what can we do to speed up the timeframe as to when the building comes out? Why can't that process start in, on September 1st?
We would have to close on the property.
There you go.
We would have to close on the property. And we cannot close on the property. First of all, there's a restriction in the, in the contract. But even if we wanted to, we couldn't close on the property without final site plan approval and caper approval. And we figure that there's some, need time to get there, no?
Do you need a caper approval for the demolition?
No. We wouldn't close if we don't have caper approval.
Caper approval, okay, so that's-
We need to close on the property. The seller will love us to take down the building for half a ticket, but I, we have to close on the property.
Yeah, I understand there's at least six months for caper application.
The seller is not going to allow us to demolish the building until, until, because they don't want anything to jeopardize their-
Yeah.
We'll take it down as fast as possible. I mean, we've got two bids out and for a third, and we might get it in and close a timetable. Because this is the conservative estimate that would come from the biggest contract.
We're, we're trying to be forthright with it. Now, I could tell you, okay, so start taking it down in September and show up the end of August and say, "We can't take it down."
Well, then what you do, willing to wait to take it down until after the summer's over?
We thought it was a priority to get it down before the summer-
You know, we're not talking about this summer, we're talking about the following summer.
Yeah, but I mean-
We just don't want to hit it in the middle of the summer, that's all.
No, no.
We don't either, either than Long Branch.
We're looking to have, based upon the schedule that they gave us in our closing, we're looking to have the building, the towers down by the end of May 2020.
We will use our best efforts to do the demolition as soon as possible and to oversee the demolition to make sure there are no delays.
I mean, I think what this, Renone was saying, I'm kind of saying the same thing. He's like, "You'd like to see this all done so there's insurance that we're not running close to Memorial Day."
Right.
Yeah, that's true. And we'd like to get it done because otherwise, if you don't start until September 2020, then this building is not going to be down until the winter of 2021. So you'll, you'll go two more beach seasons with that ISOR being there.
We're going to do it before that. The reality is, if we don't do it now, I mean, right now, we're the best game in town. If we walk away from the job, then they have to wait for another buyer to come along. And then they'll go through these whole negotiations again. So I understand entirely, the mayor made it abundantly clear that the idea was to get the towers down as soon as possible. Even before we came here, we went out and we've been soliciting bids, you know, for the demolition. I'm just relating to you what has been related to us. I mean, and all the contractors have used the term, it's a conservative estimate of four and a half to five months. And they also put the caveat, I mean, depending on weather, things of that nature. If we get a balmy winter, you know, and we don't have to contend with storms and things of that nature, they might very well get it down by eight. But, you know.
We also have an economic incentive to get it down ASAP because when we close, there's a clock start on the A-trus. And time is money in construction. We're very aware of it. We're developers, we're builders, we, we understand that concept. So it's an art, we have an incentive to get those buildings down ASAP and to start construction.
Just by way of information, the estimated cost on demolition of this building is two and a half to three and a half million dollars, depending on how much contamination is in the building. Just an outright demolition is two and a half, plus the, plus the remediation.
And how much will these units be selling for approximately?
They'll be selling what's consistent with the current competitive set that's out there, between a million and a million and two?
For a two-bedroom?
Mr. Montefiore, when you talk about public amenities, where does this specifically occur?
Well, the original-
I mean, I know you're talking about the landscape.
Yeah, well, they, well, the original approval had a health club that was open to the public, was like-
There was a certain, certain number of memberships that would be available to the public. And that's, that's what precipitated a lot of the valet parking because there weren't an equal number of parking spaces for the size of the spa or the health club. That's why we've upped the number of parking spaces. So we don't have that type of a situation. So if the public comes, membership is sold, they come, they'll be able to get there, have a parking space, et cetera, without interfering with anyone else. And that, that'll hold true even in the summer because it was anticipated under the original plan. And I, when I say what was anticipated under the original plan, this is what I've been told by the developer and the professionals that handled the original plan. The concept was that in the wintertime, they figured a certain percentage of these unit owners were not occupied because they would live elsewhere. Therefore, there would not be a problem of parking in the wintertime. They felt that in the summertime, when everybody was down, that's when you would have-
There are no one-bedrooms, yeah. There are no one-bedrooms, right?
No, they're actually, they have two bedrooms and they have like a bedroom. So they're actually two bedrooms.
Yeah.
I like how it's set. I like that better word, "put up" or "shut up." We've already put up considerable dollars and we've got to put up more dollars. And we put up the more dollars, they become unfunded. So one of the reasons we were coming for the board this evening was to see if we could get an indication as to whether or not they would amend the ordinance for the zone to increase the density to allow 140 units. If the council was not amenable to that, then we'll just walk away from the job.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Falvo.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next stage is.
Just to the left, buildings to the right, right-of-way goes down the middle.
And the, the next building over would then get that much land on the back of their property, correct, and then?
No, we, no, they're both us. We're on both sides.
No, no, I'm sorry, I'm passing, I'm passing that property, right?
Oh, oh, you vacate the whole thing?
Sure.
Yes, they would match it.
Well, the other reason, would, we wouldn't vacate it just along your, your line, because then we'd be left with a right-of-way in the middle of the road, so we vacate the whole thing.
Would make more sense.
So that each property would get that much more land.
Yes, they'd go to the midline, unless someone could prove that years ago, the entire right-of-way was part, part of one mother property, if you can prove that, it all goes to one side, if you can't, it goes fifty-fifty.
By you, by the way, you win the prize for knowing that. Nobody knows that. I thought I was the only one. But the, but the answer is that it looks, that's, that's very impressive, but, so, so each, each one will, will get, but my question, is that your property line where now this right-of-way you could technically walk through, or?
Yes.
Let's say there's a murder investigation on Broadway, an emergency vehicle had to get in there, is it your plan to somehow close that off?
Fence it.
You would fence it, would you fence it with a gate? Would you fence it with a way so that if an emergency vehicle, God forbid, had to get into the back of the board of the property, they could still go through?
I don't think that's a problem, man.
Yeah, I mean, if an emergency vehicle needed to get in there, and there's a fence, a fire truck's going to knock it over, no issues.
Correct, yeah. That's what I'm saying, but I wouldn't, I mean, if there's a gate, then it would, would, would that be an issue? I don't know, Chief, is, is that a concern to you one way or the other?
Um, it would be great if we could get behind there, but it's nothing that we do very often, um, it's not, you know, like, like he said, probably the worst case would be a fire that, that they would need to set up something back there.
Correct.
Otherwise, we could go around the other side on.
So would that be a, if we could do a gate, that'd be great.
If we asked you to do that?
No, I don't think so. If you just, if we put up a fence, and, and part of the fence was a gate, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, so that if they, you needed to get.
Well, we would control the gate.
Well, I, I'm told that the fire truck doesn't really care whether you control it or not, they just.
I, I suspect you're right, and there's nothing to lose.
I've asked that question of Chief before, it's like, we don't need keys, we just.
Right, right, right. We, we, we'll use one that we can replace by.
Right, if they try to break through.
Sure, if I, if I may, you know, one of, one of my concerns always is, you know, and I've thought about this thing over the years for a long time, and I, I may, at some point or another, have had a discussion with the police department about it, one of the things I don't want to do is to have that be an opaque situation behind the Sicconi building, because then that just becomes ripe for an issue of, of drug dealing, or whatever other.
What do you mean by opaque, I'm sorry?
Well, that you can't see through.
Oh, yeah.
So in other words, I don't want the police going down Morel Street and have no ability to see through there, that was one of the reasons.
Yeah.
One of the reasons why we, we, a number of years ago, they just put flower pots in there, so that we didn't create an, an unsafe opportunity behind there. It does me no good to have that kind of situation going on back there.
Right now, it's kind of a right-of-way to nowhere, and, I don't know if anybody on the council had any questions, either I or one of the volunteers could answer, it's, like I say, you probably, you may not have known it was there, because it's not something that jumps out at you, but, I know I've been to the property numerous times, not to look at the right-of-way, the, and when I first saw it, who uses that? And the fact that it doesn't connect, I mean, Pearl Avenue, Pearl Street's inside, I'm a Long Beach native, too, it's a Long Beach native, so, it was a type of thing, when I, when I first looked at it, what is it doing here, and why is this all that's left of it? I mean, why didn't they just get rid of the whole thing packed in a day? And I guess, I don't know the answer to that question. But I understand there's been a draft, I haven't seen it, but Mr. Renault tells me there's a draft floating around, of, of ordinance that should you be so inclined to introduce it at one meeting of the public hearing on the vote, so, and if that's the case, we'd likely shortly answer that, in case anything is there, intention. One of the things that bothers me is, I'm a, as you know, I'm the borough attorney next door in West Long Beach, and the, that trailer thing that's sitting in the right-of-way, if the right-of-way was so important, you wouldn't put a trailer in the middle of it.
Well, clearly, those people treat that property like it's theirs, much like you paid that part of it, right?
Yes.
But the city gave a permit for that.
And apparently, it has no sunset date, it's just there.
Is there a trailer permit for it?
Yeah.
Apparently under prior administration.
I was going to say, myself, like, who needs to look into that, right, yeah.
We're not trying, if, to be honest with you, if you, if you vacate the right-of-way, we don't care what you do with that trailer, but, but it just seems, if, if somebody having to do with the buildings were to complain that they think it's not right, a legitimate question would be, is, and why do you have that trailer sitting there for three, four, five years, when it shouldn't be there?
And even give a permit before then, in the right-of-way.
Yeah, and if I could add one more thing, what kind of precipitated, brought this whole thing to a head was, I guess, about a year ago, or so Gabriel's tow being all of a sudden started parking a tow truck behind the furniture site, so I had to ask the code enforcement officer at the time to do something about it, and they moved it in name story, in a parking lot, over behind Snowbike Six, again, we rest that back, we got a black tank, I called it, folks, and we came there, staging area, and we, we actually live on top of it, and I always have a tow truck following, all night long, and so.
I don't, I don't mean to cut these guys short, but this, Kevin has to leave, so I need, I need that, we need ten minutes of his time.
I don't think we have anything else to do.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
We can keep the business.
I need a motion to adjourn executive session.
Don't move.
Mr. Danglars?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Brooks?
Yes.
Dr. Sally?